About that time, seven. I'm gonna get ready and kick us off here, Matt. Get ready, seven. All right. All right, the September 18th, 2023 legislative session of Anaronda County is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silent. Please stand and pray in a manner that is consistent with your faith. Please bow your head. Dear Lord, please continue to grant us wisdom and balance as we legislate on behalf of all the citizens of this great county. We pray that all of us will continue to work together and be examples of service and decency. Continue to watch over us as we travel over the highways and the byways and that we serve all those who need us in this position, dear Lord. In all these things, we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. All right. So every year, the Maryland Association of Counties stops by to check in and update the county council. We are pleased to have Mako, the Maryland Association of County Officials, here this evening to give us a quick update before we get to our regularly scheduled business. I want to bring before you a great man who I happen to love dearly like a brother. So I want to introduce and bring forward, his name is Howard County Executive Calvin Ball. He is the 2023 Mako president, and I want to bring forward Michael Sanderson, who is the Mako executive director. So gentlemen, please come forward and enlighten us.
Thank you so much. It's quite an honor to be here, and I know that you have limited time, but if I may very briefly give you a quick anecdote. So I spent about 13 years on our county council, the third longest-serving member of our county council in Howard County history. During that time, at one point, I was talking with someone about how we did not have a Toys for Tots in Howard County. And we now have been having a Toys for Tots in Howard County for almost a decade, and that's only because of your chairman, Pete Smith. And so because of him, there are hundreds of kids who are less fortunate getting toys during the holiday season and families who are a little stressed and greatly appreciative. And so I appreciate always being here. Howard County and Anaronda County have a very special relationship, and it's an honor to serve as Mako president, and it's always a pleasure to come and visit you. Thank you so much. I have with me executive director Michael Sanderson, a brilliant, accomplished leader of Mako who has been serving in a very important role for many years here, and he's going to do much of the heavy lifting. But I just wanted to preface by saying it's a great pleasure. I know most of you in some form or fashion, even if it's just reading about you, and some of you like Councilmember Pickard, very well. And so I just appreciate all of you. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Sanderson.
Thank you very much, and thanks very much for the time this evening. I want to be respectful of your agenda and try and do a quick run-through of a handful of issues that Mako has been focused on on behalf of the county governments for a nonprofit organization that represents and advocates for county government officials and all the services we deliver back home to all Marylanders. So we've distributed a packet which has a dozen or two dozen pages of stuff, and I have no intention to go through that in any detail, which is always the nice easy payload. But instead, I'll try and talk through a few policy issues that have been coming up as county executive Ball and I have been meeting with your counterparts from other jurisdictions around the state, large and small. It turns out we have an awful lot of issues that are in common and priorities and concerns that are pretty similar. This piece of paper and this packet is substantially kind of looking backward on the last legislative session. I want to focus particularly on issues that are still live and still ahead of us, at least in part. But if there's something that I omit in the interest of brevity that you want to get to or talk more about, that's probably the best use of our collective time. So let me talk about four things real briefly. The state budget and fiscal picture. I want to talk about paid leave as a new policy in Maryland, what it means for employers and counties, rolling out legal cannabis and the challenges that still lie ahead on that front, and our work to try and advance and support firefighters, both career and volunteers. So I'll talk through those four issues real briefly. State's fiscal circumstance has changed, the wind has changed in the last six or nine months or thereabouts. The budget year we just put together for FY24 was a relatively easy one for the incoming governor. There were, it was a big surplus for the closeout of last year. That turned into an ability to basically say yes to all the formulas and ongoing spending, the sort of autopilot stuff, was a pretty easy year to say yes to all the basics and maybe sprinkle a little bit on top. In early March, Maryland wrote down its revenue forecasts, and it felt like whatever was going on with the American economy, including some federal support to keep the, an economic collapse to join the sort of medical pandemic emergency, maybe some of those effects were slowing or stopping. And there are indications that the revenue side of things, which is very much connected to the economy of the moment, is softening. Where we saw things slow down in the late part of the legislative session back in March, the end of this month, the state is going to make another revision to its own revenues, and the smart money is that that will be to the red. Now, it's weird because just today, we saw an announcement that last year, or for June 30th, the last fiscal year, the state closed out nominally with a surplus. That's true, but Maryland, like most AAA-rated large public entities, tends to build in a surplus as a smart fiscal mechanism. So that doesn't mean that we overachieved on revenues or underspent in the budget. It just means there's some money in the till at the end of the year. That's by design, that's an ordinary circumstance. That dollar amount will make some people feel like it's, wow, happy days are here again, there's 550 million lying about. In a 60-some-million-dollar full state budget, 500 million left over is fine, but that's not a parade. So where are we for the years ahead? Probably back to what will feel a little more normal to old-timers like me who have done this a lot, that will probably see tighten the belt a click or two kind of budget year ahead. If they face a problem of 4, 5, 6, 7, 800 million dollars on a state budget of tens of billions, then that's enough to have to make some adjustments and say no to some things along the way. So we may be back more into that level of thinking. What does that mean for education commitments, which is one of the biggest driver for county budgets, but also for the state budget, especially in a couple of years once their own education trust fund that's prepaid for some of these costs kind of runs dry? That's on the table, too, although I don't think state leaders are looking to abandon the goals of this 10-year Kerwin Blueprint Plan, but it's a matter of means to get from here to there and the specifics along the way. I'll mention specifically, in 2022, the legislature created a structure for guaranteeing paid leave for employees, so employers of all sizes, offering paid leave by a wide definition, family leave and so forth. We're not the first state to do this, but this is a pretty broad mandate for employers across the state. The rollout's a little ways down the road, but what we got done this year was to make sure that entities like county governments and most public entities that already are in the generous benefits business have a way to opt out of the state insurance program. They're going to set this up kind of like the way unemployment insurance works. Most employers will pay into a big pot, and then the state will pay the benefits for your employees. The alternative is set up your own, basically self-funded program. Legislation passed this year, counties were among many stakeholders at the table to make it clearer and the timetables clearer, so you can set up your program, get it approved by the state, and get up and running doing your own thing, which it sounds like most of our counties want to do. The reason I know that is that we're in the business right now of working with the Association of Boards of Education and the Municipal League and some others on a collaborative. It sounds like a lot of folks are going to want sort of the cookie-cutter offering, and if so, if we all go together and secure one vendor or one bidder or a pair of bidders, whatnot, for all those public entities, we might get the market force to buy down the price for everybody. And I think there's a win-win opportunity there. Plus, if we all go in together and have one model, we all get approved by the state, and there's sort of safety in numbers on that front. So stay tuned, but both counties, large and small, seem to be interested in that offering. Third thing I'll mention for a couple of minutes is, as I'm sure you know, back on July 1, we flipped a switch. Voters last fall said yes to adult-use cannabis to be legal under Maryland state law. The easy part is behind us, just the beginnings of having some facilities that were already approved and cited and licensed for medical to go into the sort of commercial realm. There are steps ahead for more licensees to get approved and cited and so forth. There's still some unanswered questions here, in all candor, about the locations and the conditions on licenses and so forth. The legislation weave back and forth with some clever language, some of which we've never seen before. Terms like reasonable zoning has never been in Maryland law, but that's the new standard for what local governments can apply for approving these licenses. They said you can have a zone of 500 feet away from sensitive facilities like schools and churches. It's a pretty common thing that local governments want to do. And then it said you could reduce that distance if you want to. But the fact of the matter is, most jurisdictions probably would want to increase the 500 feet to maybe say 1,000 feet or 1,500 or something else like that. And now the whisper on the street is, well, that's what they meant to do, and maybe we'll even give you that latitude. You'd like to see that in the law before you actually hang your hat on it, but there's work to be done on the specifics there. There may also be work to be done on the revenue structure. Maryland went really heavy into avoiding overtaxing the new legally, new legal product. There's some states that have gone kind of heavy, saying the growers pay a tax, then a distributor pays a tax, and then there's a retailer tax, and you end up with a collective tax rate that's 30, 40, 50, 60%. Some states are looking back on what they've done there because they've ended up with an awful lot of the marketplace remaining in the illegal market because there's a tax advantage to just go into the guy you used to know. Maryland wants to avoid that fake, we want to advance social justice issues as well as recognize the goals of the voters on the policy here. So the idea is tax it like another product comparable to alcohol, but not go overboard and create those sort of perverse disincentives. So all those things may be on the table for some revisiting. There's not much of a share for local revenues, which we thought we were, probably had a larger share coming to us. Whether that'll change in the next legislative session, I don't know. Fiscal issues may be part of the matter there, but this isn't a pay-for-the-Blueprint kind of revenue source. It's more of a around-the-edges kind of thing. And finally, I'll mention an issue that has been, that we've been hearing from your counterparts in jurisdictions, large and small, whether your firefighting service is largely career, largely volunteer, or a mix like Howard and Anaronda Counties. We're having a devil of a time getting folks to walk in the door and be interested in fire service, whether it's volunteer or career. Last year, we pulled together legislation to sort of Annapolis kind of likes, bring everybody to the table and try and work out a plan, but the plan would probably need to have some dollars behind it, and so we'll need to have some movers and shakers behind that. But the idea of some free training and free education opportunities, maybe through our two-year schools, some college debt relief or, you know, other things along those lines as stuff we haven't put on the table as incentives for folks to join the fire service, things along those lines may be on the table for the year ahead as we try and address. We've got a lot of particularly volunteer companies with folks in their 60s and 70s still running calls because there's no one in their 30s and 20s who are showing up to join. So it's an issue on the minds of counties, and we're leading with a whole bunch of other stakeholders trying to tackle that. All right, mentioned several things, skipped a lot of others, but wanted to dance through a handful of policy issues. If there's something I missed or something I'd like to talk about further, let's hear it.
I do got one question. So Mayor Scott recently had a meeting here to talk about crime issues, specifically the Brooklyn homes crime that happened a couple of months ago. Has Mako deep-dive, and I know the governor had probably had several conversations with him as well. We obviously had someone in our county, several victims that lived in our county. I'm not sure if Howard had some of those victims, about 30 of them. Has Mako sort of had a policy in consideration when it comes to crime and thinking regionally how we can address those issues together? For either one of you.
Yeah, it's a good, broad question. I think the gears are turning within our organization. As you might imagine, the Sheriff's Association, the chiefs of police are generally our allies on the frontlines issue there, also state's attorneys and other folks who are part of the larger public safety issue are all stakeholders. General Assembly had a hearing on juvenile justice issues just last week, and there's a lot of folks trying to see if they might be able to recalibrate some recent legislation on that front, not specific to that one incident, but concern about juvenile crime. Are there enough diversion programs and offerings for kids who are 13, 14, 15, 16, who find themselves getting recruited into crime? Right now, we've got a problem on that side, too. So not just in the Baltimore region, but I think statewide, there's an interest here. It's conceivable that Mako may take up as one of our legislative issues sort of a blanket. Let's find some more resources and do some more focusing on crime, these juvenile offenses and safety on our streets. So there's a lot of interest from your counterparts at the elected level, just like there is in, you know, communities, generally, I think.
And additionally, this past summer conference, where I was very pleased that our team worked so incredibly hard, attendance was up 30% from previous year, highest attendance I think we've ever had. I actually moderated a panel on shock trauma. And oftentimes, when we think about shock trauma, we don't quite understand how it impacts each and every one of our counties, whether it's unfortunate gun violence or just a multi-car pileup. These are incidences that impact shock trauma. Our shock trauma center is something that is quite unique in the country, especially how it was put together. And if we were to try to put something like that together today, there are some estimates that say it could be well over $100 million. And so having the proper investments in shock trauma to ensure that we can save minutes and save lives is something that's important, too. And we were able to have at Mako a moderated panel about it.
Ms. Radivin.
Thank you. I was curious if you've heard anything on the affordable housing front. That has definitely reached crisis proportions in Anaronda County and I'm sure plenty of other places around the state.
I think this is a topic that's been popping up again, jurisdictions, large and small, and the specifics of the issue vary place by place. But I think, I think there are a number of factors right now that are sort of conspiring against good housing policy. And I think local governments have a role there, but we're not, we don't control every single card on the table. We're in a curious spot with rapidly, recently, like the last 18 months or so, seeing interest rates rise has created a new challenge in housing affordability that just layers on top of things that were already been there for the last number of years. A lot of places have just a, just a not enough housing stock, period. Some places have infrastructure challenges where the places that might otherwise make sense, you literally just don't have the pipes to handle another X units in a community. So these take different shapes and sizes. We did a full day on housing issues last fall. Mako takes sort of one issue that feels like it's bigger than one of those one-hour panels at a conference or do a webinar. We take a full day every year in the fall. Last fall, we spent time on housing with the yimbiest of the yimbies, along with, you know, with the Realtor community and with banks and financiers and local planning and infrastructure folks and so forth, and tried to lay out a whole range of those issues. We presented a lot of that content to general assembly leaders. There's a, there's a task force already underway by the legislature to look at accessory dwelling units and maybe create like model policies for local governments who haven't yet tackled that issue in your local plan. So there are a number of different pieces to the puzzle, but honestly, there's some of this that's kind of new even to veteran planners. 15 years ago, nobody thought of the idea of homes, residential homes being built just for the purpose of becoming short-term rentals. It's going to be buy so you can sell it by Airbnb. And the mechanics of that kind of marketplace are just, it's a whole new wrinkle in housing policy and like community standards and so forth. So challenging issue, a lot of folks are on it. There's a deep and wide. If you'd like to get further engaged, we are hip-deep in talking with the state housing, Housing Department of Housing and other stakeholders on this stuff, literally week by week.
And I think from a Mako perspective, we try to find that appropriate balance. Generally, Mako's, one of our core principles is protecting local autonomy. So helping to ensure that, for example, a lot of the issues around affordable housing, of course, there are market factors that can't be controlled, but that are within our purview deal with land use, and so that is a local authority. However, as Michael indicated, you know, accessory dwelling units is an issue that the state is taking up. So trying to have that balance of how can we create policy that is helpful while still maintaining local autonomy is something that we're continuing to work with our state partners. In Howard, we're going through our general plan process, and just Friday, I was speaking with Secretary Day of DHC D about affordable housing challenges, and he sees it throughout the entire state and region. So I think there is some opportunity to thread the needle on best practices that we can employ in each of our jurisdictions that make the most sense for our constituents.
Can I ask a related follow-up? So I'll just mention that if you're looking for a great bill to model ADUs, Anaronda County passed one, and I think it was unanimous, right? So check it out. My follow-up question is actually another practice. I haven't heard anything specific in Anaronda County, but I've heard in other states where large investors are buying up, buying up properties and then allowing them to sit vacant, basically to push prices up. And I'm curious, is there any way for us to, you know, even find out the state of that problem in Maryland? And if it is a problem, what kind of, you know, things that we can do about it?
I think we could do some more research, and if you hear about that in your jurisdiction, let us know, and then we can see throughout other jurisdictions how pervasive it may be. And let me just, to your other point, so I'm very close to most of the county executives in the state, particularly your county executive. We want at the same time, and all of us have a healthy competition. And every once in a while, there are certain things that happen in your county where I go back to folks in my team and I say, hmm, your council has been doing some incredible work, and I just want to applaud you for some of the things that you've been doing on addressing affordable housing and some other issues. I'm very impressed, so, yeah, kudos.
Seeing no additional lights, Mr. President. It's been a pleasure, glad for your leadership this cycle and look forward to many more years out of you in this state, and I'm grateful that you're able to come here tonight. Well, Mr. Sanderson, thank you for being here today and informing us of what's been going on.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, members of the council, continue to do great work and keep moving forward, and thank you so much for the time.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
All right, we will now open our invitation to the audience. This is an opportunity to speak briefly on any subject that is not on the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the council, we did receive two submissions through that online testimony tool. Everyone got a copy. It's included in a summary that is posted online, and it will be added to the meeting record.
We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting. Do we believe we had two people that signed up in advance? Is that Lone, Tular? So, yeah, let me get Lone, is that Tular, Talar? T-A-U-L-O-R? No? What about Andrea Jones? Okay. Yeah, neither one of you looks like an Andrea Jones, so I'm assuming that, that's not. All right. So we'll now open it up to anyone that's in the audience. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak, please come forward at this time. We have one, two, three, about six chairs there, so, and we're going to close public testimonies shortly after this. And we'll start with, from my right to left, makes it easier on me, and please state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes, so we'll turn it over to you, Mrs. Sanders.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, council members. My name's Matt Midan. I'm Chair of the Board of the Growth Action Network, and we're here again to ask this council, please, to convert these meetings to a hybrid format. We've been here for a year having this conversation. It was going to be January when the new technology was in, and then it was going to be sometime this summer, and then it was going to be after the summer break, and here we are still with no way for people from Tracy's Landing or Brooklyn Park or Annapolis Junction or Laurel or Springdale to have a voice in these meetings. Council did an admirable job of meeting via Zoom during the COVID crisis. This shouldn't be such a big stretch to have these meetings via hybrid and allow people to comment from home, particularly as it gets dark in the winter and hard to travel. So in the interest of good government, we ask again when we might open up these meetings and proceedings to citizens across the far reaches of this county. We've had a couple of requests that have not been responded to. We'd like to hear back from the chairman and on this topic. Also, we learned recently that OPZ is undertaking a rewrite of Article 18 of the code. We're thrilled, we've been agitating for that for a long time. We hope they would do so similarly with Article 17 as well, and we're asking the council to press the administration to get these done with haste. And in the meantime, we're asking the council to refrain from any additional text amendments to the code. Between 2019 and 2022, there were 82 text amendments to the code. These are conditions that affect one person that change the code for the entire county, and there are unintended consequences on all of these text amendments. And we're saying if you're, and we appreciate the fact that you're responsive to your constituents, but if your constituents are having a problem, we have appeals routes for those, and if they're too complex, solve that problem. No more text amendments, please. Thank you.
Sir?
Light on. David Morrisberger, Davidsonville. I'm here to speak that at the last meeting, when you, there was a motion to revisit Bill 6123. I came in late, I didn't know what was going on, so I went back and investigated what happened to the prior one. And I think that was to very, very, the interconnection between 55 and 61 were very complex, and as Ms. Radivin said, that delaying this, I think the way it was executed was one of the reasons that people have distrust in their government, because there were so many people here that talked to 55, and when it came time to actually do the final vote of 61, there was nobody here to testify. Nobody, including myself, knew that this was going to happen, and the vote that was rushed the two weeks prior, where like, I think it was, Mr. Smith said, "We only have 11 minutes, let's go, let's go." And that was pushed through without a proper debate, without proper testimony from the public was, I find it unacceptable. I please wish in the future that you don't do those kind of tactics, and it could have been all for the right reasons, but the bottom line was, it really didn't take the people's views into account through testimony, even written testimony, because nobody knew this was happening. So please, please, don't, don't do those kinds of things in the future. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Elijah Tippins. I'm at 806 Lucky Road in Severn, and everyone's free to come by and check out my yard. It looks horrible because somebody cut down all my plants. I think it might be the county because they, they sent me some letters talking about a code. It's like, it says something along the lines of you can't have weeds or grass in excess of 12 inches. And I've been getting these for a while. I don't know who, somebody in the neighborhood doesn't like that I have evening primrose growing in my yard, which I was like, is that a weed? So I like called the county, and they're like, they, they... So I like called the county, and they're like, they couldn't tell me what a weed was. So I've been mowing my grass. But then they come out, even though there's, you know, there's edible plants and things that I'm using growing on purpose. I talked to a guy named Tony on 2nd of August and tried to, like, understand what a weed was. He pulled out a book with a bunch of plants in it. And none of this stuff was growing in my yard. None of the stuff that was like a book of weeds and invasives and stuff. So I don't know where he got it from. Anyways, I'm just annoyed. I'm just complaining, because this sucks. My raspberries got cut down, my evening primrose, asparagus, stuff that I've been growing for years. They just, somebody came in and mowed it all down. I expect to get a letter from the county asking me to pay for it. I'm not going to. Thank you.
Thank you. David Doll, Curtis Bay. Few minutes down the road from Brooklyn Park, I made it. You know, it's funny, people talk about, oh, libertarian, they want like personalized nukes. No, I'm just like wondering why his plants got cut down, right? So apologies for coming at this late, but I didn't get the opportunity to speak on your gun violence and gun control referendum. So I just wanted to go over a few things here while we were at it, or while I had some time. So some things were said that were a bit agitating. One was the calling the Second Amendment a piece of art and a thing. And I would just like to remind you guys that you swore a solemn oath to God to uphold that Second Amendment art thingy. So I would just ask you to, you know, remember that. That is very important to me. And also the claim that if your ideas on how to solve the problem aren't aligned with what I want to do, I don't want to hear it. I think the problem is, is that because Republicans are on one side and Democrats are on the other on this issue, that Democrats think that they can own the issue, that only their solutions are gonna solve the problem, the Republicans are in the past. As libertarian could diapolically pose to all seven of you on the stage, I would just like to remind you that you don't hold a monopoly on these issues. And if you want dialogue, you can't start by telling people, like, no, your idea is, I'm not even gonna listen. Like, that's what's gonna keep everyone else away from your particular little group. And we're seeing the factioning, so let's not do that. I think that's about it, but thank you. Thanks for your time.
Glad we got to listen to you. Just good remarks. Please be seated. And as they go back to their seat, a couple of weeks ago, actually, we put out an announcement for an IT position. The legislative branch is hiring a person who will be responsible for managing and incorporating the merger between in-person meetings as well as virtual. So if you have an IT background, you can probably go to some of our social media. I know some of us posted on our pages. If you have IT, if you're looking for a job, we're trying to hire somebody right now. So you seem to be the guy that can fix it. So come aboard, and you can actually do the hands-on and make it happen. So, but that is out. And so if you know someone, let us know. We're gonna be interviewing folks here probably in the very near future who can fill that position and actually do the job with integrating that. So it's underway right now. Seeing no more individuals at the table, the public hearing is now, invitation to the audience is now closed. Is there any item, any council member would like to place on the agenda? Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you. Before I actually mention that item, I wanted to just briefly address the, I'm sorry, I didn't catch or remember your name, but I have some intention to work on and try to improve our county's noxious weed law, which is probably, if it truly was the county that came and mowed down your law, I mean, lawn. There, you are not alone of folks that have tried to do something different with their yard and, you know, grow plants instead of just strictly lawn. And we're learning more and more about the benefits of it. So I'm working on that, and I've got some help from one of the environmental organizations. So it's coming. And I'm very sorry that happened to you. And I really hope it wasn't the county, although if it was someone else, that's kind of not cool either. So, anyway, okay. And now the item that I'd like to put on the agenda is I would like to withdraw Bill 72-23.
I don't think she needs a motion, because... All right. May I have the motion that the partial reading of any bill and resolution amendment to a bill or resolution or amendments constitute the reading of the whole? All right, so second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of September 5th, 2023.
Minutes of September 5th, 2023. The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Smith at 7:00 PM. It was opened with the invocation given by Ms. Ledbetter and was followed by the pledge of allegiance. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 5th, 2023?
So moved. Allison Pickard.
Is there a second?
Rodvian, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The minutes of September 5th, 2023 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the title of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 7523, Inordinance Concerning Approval of the Lease Between Anarundel County and Gaudenzia Inc. Bill Number 7623, Inordinance Concerning Construction and Property Maintenance Code Supplements, Building Permit Exemptions, Detached Accessory Structures. Bill Number 7723, Inordinance Concerning Zoning Residential and Industrial Districts, Conditional and Special Exception Uses Natural Wood Waste Recycling Facilities.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 4023, Resolution Approving the Application to the United States Department of Justice Office of Justice Programs for a Grant Under the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program, Federal FY 2023 Local Solicitation and Recognizing the County Executive's Authority to Act in Connection with the Grant. Resolution Number 4123, Resolution Urging the State of Maryland to Enact New Laws Relating to Truth in Marketing and Patient Brokering and Kickbacks for Substance Use Disorder Treatment Providers and Facilities. Resolution Number 4223, Resolution Urging the Anarundel County Executive to Establish a Grant Program to Assist Recovery Residences With Installing Fire Suppression Systems. Resolution Number 4323, Resolution Supporting Medicare for All and Urging Federal and State Legislators Representing Anarundel County to Work Towards Enactment of Medicare for All to Guarantee Comprehensive Health Care for All Americans.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6223.
Bill Number 6223, Inordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Zoning Farm Dual Uses.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Chairman. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table are Lynn Miller from the Office of Planning and Zoning and Lori Blair Klossmeyer from the Office of Law. Bill 6223 was heard at the prior council meeting. This is a bill proposed by the County Ag Commission to allow additional commercial uses on farm properties to supplement their income. It was amended at the last meeting to make the effective date contingent on approval of the Critical Area Commission, and we would ask for a favorable vote on this bill.
All right. Any questions, Ms. Ledbetter? Any questions on, okay, 6223? All right, seeing no additional discussion, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 6223. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Mr. Chair.
And I don't see anyone that signed up in advance. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on Bill 6223? All right, seeing no movement. Public hearing on Bill Number 6223 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6223.
Bill Number 6223, Inordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Zoning Farm Dual Uses.
Any additional comments or questions? All right. Madam Secretary, I don't see any amendments. Call a roll on Bill Number 6223?
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 6223 has been passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6423.
Bill Number 6423, Inordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Zoning, Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies, Parole Town Center, Parole Town Center Master Plan.
And then we're gonna turn it over to Mr. Barrett as he comes forth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Joining me is Christina Pampa and Patrick Hughes from Planning and Zoning and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. We discussed this bill at the last meeting. As, just to remind everyone, OPZ, Mr. Hughes and Ms. Pampa presented a PowerPoint going over the four corners of the plan, as you could say. In the interim, we've had many conversations with Councilwoman Rodvian and stakeholders. There are a number of amendments coming tonight, so I'll hold our comments on those and prepare to answer any general questions. But we're looking forward to discussing these amendments shortly.
All right, any additional comments from, seeing none? All right, we'll now open up the public hearing on Bill Number 6423. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the council. We did receive one submission through the online testimony tool. Everyone here got an email. It's included in the summary that's posted online, and it will be added to the meeting record.
I didn't see anyone that signed up in advance. Anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on 6423? All right. Public hearing on Bill Number 6423 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6423.
Bill Number 6423, Inordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Zoning, Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies, Parole Town Center, Parole Town Center Master Plan.
That is a long title. I see, we do have amendments. Someone say that? Please read Amendment Number Three.
Amendment Number Three, This Amendment Changes the Number of Trips That a Development Must Create Before It Is Subject to Test for Adequate Public Road Facilities From 50 to 250.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you. I just want to preface that all of the amendments that you'll hear in this pack at numbers 13 through, I believe, is it 17, are amendments that came from various stakeholders that are interested in making sure this is a workable piece of legislation and vetted very carefully by both the administration and the Office of Planning and Zoning. And, did I mention Office of Law? Office of Law as well. So I want to thank all of those groups for participating and helping really look carefully at these issues. So I'll start with Amendment Number Three. This really just kind of sets the bar a little bit higher for the lowest number that, the lowest number of, now, all I can say is rush hour trips. But it's, what's the correct terminology?
Peak hour.
Peak hour, thank you. Peak hour trips before adequate public facilities traffic exemption is in place. And so this would raise it from 50 to 250. And I just want to assure my colleagues that this still actually gets, you know, almost everything but very, very small businesses. In fact, under the data that we've got from Office of Planning and Zoning, even a small business would generate approximately 250 trips. So this is really just kind of making sure that we don't add extra paperwork and whatnot to folks that are trying to, you know, do good redevelopment.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Rodvian, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second. Allison Pickard.
Mr. Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to first sort of speak broadly on the amendments that are coming and echo Councilwoman Rodvian's comments. There have been a lot of meetings with varying groups of stakeholders. I want to thank the councilwoman, the folks at the table from OPZ, and especially Ms. Kenny from Office of Law for the many, many hours of drafting and work that has gone in on these. Spoiler alert, the administration is gonna be supporting all the amendments coming. I know we're likely, we did not get through all the stakeholder comments. And so there's gonna be more amendments or more discussion in the intervening weeks between now and the next hearing date. So lots of work has gone in on this plan. And I want to just say that we support this amendment. It makes sense. It aligns the trip rules with some of our other town center areas. And we support this amendment. And with that, I'll try and keep it brief from now on.
I do, just in layman's terms, my head can be a little dense at times. So that, why was it 50 in the initial bill? Just curious.
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. That's what's currently in the code right now. Both Odenton and Glen Burnie have a threshold of 250 trips. And that's, this would bring parole in alignment. And just to give you, I know that Ms. Rodvian talked about a small business, but just to give you an example, for residential, a project, a mid-rise project that has 10 units generates about 50 trips in a peak hour. A 50-unit mid-rise multifamily project generates 250. So when you're looking at, I mean, you wouldn't even probably have a mid-rise with only 10 units in it, but it's a very, very small threshold right now. And let's say a high turnover, 100-seat restaurant, that's like 437 trips in a peak hour. So I, I think it, bringing it into alignment with what we have for Odenton and Glen Burnie makes sense. And you're still catching virtually almost every project with the threshold being at 250.
Okay, just curious. Any additional questions on Amendment Number Three? All right. Madam Secretary, please call a roll on Amendment Number Three.
Mr. Volkey? Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Three has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Four.
Amendment Number Four, This amendment clarifies that except for properties in the critical area, if any provision of the Parole Town Center subtitle or master plan conflicts with another provision of the code or any county manual, the provision of the Parole Town Center subtitle or the master plan applies.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you. So I actually think that description is right on target. I don't know what I could add to that, but just, it clarifies, you know, if you have two different, you know, sources of law, this is the one that prevails, the parole town center, because these have been thought out very specific to the particular parcels that are affected. And so the determination that that should be the prevailing law, I hope, would make sense and be logical for everyone, and I ask for your support. So move to adopt Amendment Number Four.
All right, is there a second?
Second. Allison Pickard.
Mr. Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, sort of get used to this theme we support. You'll see a number of these amendments are like this nature, very technical, fine-tuning the plan to make sure that any ambiguity or questions that have been raised are cleared up. So we strongly support this one.
Any additional comments on Amendment Number Four? None. Madam Secretary, please call a roll.
Mr. Volkey? Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Four has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Five.
Amendment Number Five, This amendment allows rooftop space to be included when calculating the number of building stories regardless of whether there is access from main stairwells, deletes a provision prohibiting structured parking from being the tallest structure on a site, and provides that certain unenclosed amenity areas and enclosed rooftop areas are not included when calculating the number of building stories, I believe it should be.
Ms. Rodvian?
So this is really just to make it a little bit easier to understand how you count the stories in a building, and that you can, in some instances, you may count rooftop space, and in some instances, you would not have to. So I think the best way to explain it is explaining what it will do, because these things that we're taking out are, we're taking them out to leave something more clear in the end. So in place of, this amendment proposes to add that unenclosed rooftop amenity areas and enclosed rooftop spaces stepped back at least 20 feet from the building facade. So, are you with me so far, coming back from the facade? And comprising less than 25% of a full story of the floor area are not included when calculating the number of building stories. So a great example would be like a rooftop pool, or like a rooftop garden, or something that was generally an outdoor space, but might have a need for a little bit of indoor. an outdoor space, but might have a need for a little bit of indoor space. So, like a bath house to go with the pool, or, you know, a restroom to, you know, get, or a water source or something like that, but would not be, you know, basically, an indoor contained space that would basically be another, another story to the building. So, it's just about how to count, and what counts and what doesn't count.
And this is excluding that?
This is, this is allowing those things to count. So, as long as it's stepped back, and no more than, and anything that comes up is no more than 25% of the total floor area.
Right.
So, if it's bigger than, you know, if you have something like a, if you have a pool and your poolhouse takes up half of the, you know, the space up on the roof, you would have to count it as an additional floor.
Got it.
This encourages folks to make good use of rooftop space. Oh, and so moved, moved to adopt.
Second, Allison Pickard.
I'm assuming that's going to be the theme for the night?
Yep.
So, we got our second over here as well. So, Mr. Baron?
Thank you.
Sticking with the theme, what Councilwoman Rodvian said, we support.
Seeing additional lights, Madam Secretary, please call a roll.
Mr. Volkey. Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Five has been adopted.
And we're going to continue with the Ms. Rodvian theme song here. Please read Amendment Number Six.
Amendment Number Six. This amendment changes the requirement for activity space for one square foot per five square feet to one square foot per 10 square feet. Clarifies certain requirements only apply to public activity space, and requires that where possible, activity space should be designed with buffers.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you. So, this is another one to just create a little bit more flexibility, especially when you're dealing with taller structures. So, if, right now, the amount of activity space required would be 20% of the total floor area of non, of a non-residential structure. So, if you had a five-story building that was a total of 125 square feet, you would have to put 100, or, excuse me, you'd have to put 25,000 square, let me, let me go back. If you have a five-story building that is 125,000 square feet, then you would have, like, you'd take 20% of that, and that would have to be the activity space. You'd have to have at least 25,000, because 25,000 is 20% of 125,000. And, you know, as you, as you get taller buildings, that exterior activity space gets, you know, can get quite large. And one of the things that we're trying to do is, you know, keep things very walkable, keep things close together, have some buffers, but, you know, not, not put giant spaces between buildings. So, this kind of adds a little bit more flexibility, and also requires that where possible, the activity spaces basically can function as, I'm sorry, can function as buffers between roads, parking, and other buildings. So, you kind of want to put them between things. Am I explaining that right?
Yes.
I guess they're always going to be between things, but between things that might, that you might like to have a little bit of shelter from. So, Rodvian, so moved. Amendment Number Six.
We support.
Now, you said where possible, right? I see that in there. Who determines if it's not possible?
So, that's going to be a conversation with Office of Planning and Zoning in the development process.
Any additional? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, call a roll. Amendment Number Six.
Let's try that again. Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Six has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Seven.
Amendment Number Seven. This amendment changes the maximum front setback in the defense highway corridor subarea from 60 feet to 75 feet.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you. So, you might recall that, having looked at the bill, that the parole town center is divided up into different segments. So, there's the core, which is, as the name suggests, in the middle of everything, is the most, the highest dense, density part of the parole town center. Then you have areas that are a little bit further out, that maybe are a little bit more dense, a little more autocentric, whereas the core is intended to become very walkable, a little less autocentric, very people-oriented, people-scaled. This basically allows a larger setback that is more typical in autocentric settings. So, the gateway business mix is, you know, kind of, and actually, the defense highway corridor, that, I don't know if, I'm sorry, if folks maybe are familiar with this. What's, I guess, maybe, you know, sort of like, maybe an office park where you don't have many high-rise buildings, where you have, like, lower buildings, and so, you might want a little bit more buffer in front of the street, between the street and the buildings and the parking. Am I, yeah, okay. So, I move to adopt mo, excuse me, Amendment Number Seven.
Second, Allison Pickard.
Mr. Baron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, again, this, this comes out of discussions with stakeholders, and it's just a fine-tuning of the plan to make it work a little better in one particular area. We support.
Because it's, is it 60 feet in other districts? Or master plans?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. The gateway business mix in the defense highway corridor subareas in the plan allow for a minimum setback of 15 feet and a maximum of 60. The defense highway corridor, which is the portion that goes out defense highway, which is much more autocentric.
Got it.
That is the only subarea that this amendment would allow the maximum setback to be extended to 75 feet.
Okay. Any additional questions? All right, seeing none. Please call a roll.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Seven has been adopted.
Please read Amendment Number Eight.
Amendment Number Eight. This amendment removes the restriction on expanding the maximum setback solely to accommodate surface parking between a building and a roadway.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you. So, basically, we're taking out a prohibition and allowing more flexibility where it might be needed in specific projects. So, as it's written, setbacks are not allowed for modification, but this could be, a builder could bring a modification request for a setback, for a change in setback, depending on the circumstances. And with that, move to adopt Amendment Eight.
Second, Allison Pickard.
Mr. Baron?
We support.
Any additional comments? Seeing none. Please call a roll.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Eight has been adopted.
Please read Amendment Number Nine.
Amendment Number Nine. This amendment removes a requirement to locate electric vehicle charging stations at automobile gas stations in certain locations.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you. So, I might, I'm going to ask Planning and Zoning a question here, because I think this is partially to add, to make sure that electric vehicle charging stations are more visible, but I also think there is a standard. Is it, was this a lead standard, or was this a state standard? Can I defer to Office of Planning and Zoning on what? This was a state?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Through discussion with stakeholders, they really stress the importance of allowing electric vehicle charging stations to the front of a, of a gas station facility. I haven't personally gone back to check and confirm that it is in lead, so I'm not going to say that.
Okay.
But we agreed with the rationale.
Yeah, I think if I recall the discussion correctly, this was about providing flexibility for, you know, what would work for those businesses. There, we couldn't find a strong justification why the original plan had the charging stations having to be located at the rear of the building. So, it's just made sense.
Is there motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt Amendment Number Nine. Second, Allison Pickard.
So, we're, so this, so in the current language, they have to create these charging stations at a gas station in a specific location. And you're saying we're removing that restriction at a certain location, but they're still required to put charging stations on site? Is that in the bill?
Correct. The, and Ms. Pampa, please correct me if I'm wrong. The plan stated that the gas stations had to include an electric charging station. That does not change with this amendment. What this amendment does allow is for the charging station to be located elsewhere on the parcel.
Okay. All right.
And the idea really is to go with the overall concept of you want to have buildings sort of, again, when they're closer to the sidewalks, you, you know, you generate foot traffic, and you get more, you sort of activate that, that, that walkum, that walking, the, obviously, I'm not a planning and zoning expert. I'm doing my best to be one tonight. But to, to bring the walkers into the businesses when you have the, you know, the entrances right there.
Any additional? Seeing none. Please call a roll.
Mr. Volkey. This is Number Nine. Ms. Hummer.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Nine has been adopted.
Please read Amendment Number Ten.
Amendment Number Ten. This amendment provides a redeveloped gasoline station is not required to locate gasoline pumps, electrical vehicle charging stations, or loading areas to the side or rear of the site.
Okay.
Thank you. So, this one is actually similar in concept to the one we just passed, but this deals with, you know, the gas, the actual gas pumps. And this would help encourage, there are actually a number of existing gas stations in the parole town center area. And this would basically allow them to, you know, keep their infrastructure in the locations where it currently exists, so they would not have to comply with the new requirement that those pumps are in the rear or side. So, this basically, hopefully, will encourage development as opposed to forcing a gas station to, you know, shift to the new model. And with that, I move to adopt Amendment Ten.
Second, Allison Pickard.
Mr. Baron?
Ditto to what the councilwoman said. We support.
And just to be clear, this is not removing the requirement to have a charging station at the gas station.
Correct. And if we want Office of Law to weigh in and not take my word for it, please feel free, Ms. Kenny.
This doesn't, this is silent on whether a gas station is required to have an EV charging station. I am not sure whether there's another requirement in, in another law, state or county, that requires a gas station. I don't know whether OPZ knows that or not, that requires one to have one in the first place. I can certainly look into that.
So, the way it currently works is if they, if they put a charging station, it has to meet these certain.
That's right.
Restrictions as far as location where they can be?
This governs the location of it, not, not the requirement itself.
Got it. Okay.
This basically just allows them to keep them where they are.
Got it.
So, if the existing gas station has their pumps, and, you know, they, they're probably connected to their underground tanks in a certain spot, and that way, they don't have to move everything around. They can leave their stuff up in place and still redevelop the gas station.
I got a marine brain. I'm just, I'm just, it's a lot of amendments.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Hi. Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. I just want to clarify one thing. I want to take a step slightly back, and I hope you'll indulge me. So, in parole, these regulations, it works as an overlay to what is allowed in the existing zoning districts. So, this particular set of requirements that we're in right now that talks about gas stations is when we have conditional uses. And what this, these two amendments are really amending the same section. We probably should have put them into the same amendment, but we didn't, so I apologize for that. But, we really want to separate what happens at existing gas stations and redevelop gas stations, because we do not want to provide a disincentive for some of our older gas stations to redevelop and to make it harder for them to do so. So, that's why in this amendment, we're adding and redeveloped to existing.
Got it. Or redevelop, okay. Seeing no, please call a roll.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Ten has been adopted.
Please read Amendment Number Eleven.
Amendment Number Eleven. This amendment modifies the conditions of a self-storage facility to remove that the facility be auxiliary to a permitted use, to remove that the facility be located in an enclosed structure that is controlled, and to clarify that the facility is required to locate onsite loading and unloading at the rear of the building.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you. So, this one basically changes a provision of the parole town center bill to make it so if you wanted to create a storage, a storage facility, it could be completely separate. Under the existing law, that storage facility would have to be connected, say, to an apartment building, or, actually, I'm not sure what else you would connect a, what else might you connect a storage facility to?
Garage.
Maybe a garage.
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. That's why we agreed to the amendment, because I don't really know of many self-storage facilities where it is auxiliary to another use. So, again, it's fine-tuning the bill.
Got it.
And to make sure that they are available, because if you, you know, are picturing folks living in higher-density housing, they might have a few things to store. So, it provides, it makes sure that there can be some storage within the town center. And so, the other thing is just sort of a, I don't know, a quirky thing. We had the word controlled, and the word controlled wasn't exactly clear. Were we talking about temperature-controlled or access-controlled? So, we just said, let's take that out. And then, loading and unloading from the rear of the building. So, did I motion, did I make a motion, did I move to adopt Amendment Number Eleven?
You did now.
Second, Allison Pickard.
Mr. Baron?
We support.
Got to ask, that's all. Make it official. Any additional? Ms. Ledbetter?
I was curious. It says also, remove that the facility be located in an enclosed structure, so now it could be open-air. Can you tell me what that means?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. I think my best example of this kind of storage facility is the storage facility on Chincopin Round Road in the city of Annapolis, where all of the loading is in the rear of the site. There's one entrance. There's no, there are no units that are accessible from the outside. So, you've got to go in the main entrance in the rear, and it's designed so the moving truck can actually tuck up under an, an overhang area. So, it ends up looking like a super-urban building, but it's not. It's self-storage.
Okay. Thank you.
Instead of like the more rural self-storage, which I, a lot of them have outdoor storage where there's a gated entrance. They may have some RVs stored, some boats stored. That's not what we're looking for in parole town center.
So, that sort of outdoor storage is not what, this would not allow for that?
Correct. This still has to be in a building. We just took out the word controlled, because again, as Ms. Rodvian said, was it access control? Was it HVAC?
Right.
There were a couple of things that I think are getting amended out, because when we really sat and thought about it, we, we weren't sure.
Perfect. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood that enclosed, not enclosed, part.
Motion to adopt Amendment Number Eleven. Second, Allison Pickard.
And you, Mr. Baron, are?
We are in support.
Okay. Seeing additional lights, please call a roll.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Eleven has been adopted.
Please read Amendment Number Twelve.
Amendment Number Twelve. This amendment removes the prohibition on golf course facilities in the parole town center.
All right, I'm curious about this one. Go ahead, Ms.
We're luckily, I think, as we get closer to the end of this list, they, they get a little more straightforward and a little more fun, if amendments on overlays can be fun. They clearly are fun. This one is fun. Okay, so, the amendment as it's written, or the, the bill as it's written prohibits golf courses, which kind of makes sense, right? You don't want a golf course in something you're trying to create in a high-density town center environment. But it also prohibits golf course facilities. Well, we discussed, what does that do to, for example, something like a putt-putt, which might be appropriate? Or... Or I think the more popular one is like the top golf thing, which might be appropriate, because they're a little bit more contained than a, you know, 18-hole golf course. So it's basically a little bit more flexibility, allowing, who knows? We want to, we want to leave the doors open as much as possible. So we might have golf course facilities, but not golf courses. Move to adopt motion number 12. Amendment number 12.
Second, Allison Pickard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilwoman Rodvian covered it well. As that industry has evolved, there are now computerized simulators that, you know, have a bar attached to them sometimes, and restaurants, and, and that would fit perfectly in an urban-type planned area. The 18-hole golf course is what the plan should prohibit, and this amendment only allows these types of facilities like Ms. Rodvian mentioned. Please support.
Okay. I am going to have an amendment, though, at some point. I'm just going to name this the Rodvian Town Center Master Plan.
Please don't.
Okay. Any additional comments? All right, please call a roll.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 12 has been adopted.
All right. I do think it's interesting to live in Rodvian Town. It has a ring to it. Please read amendment number 13.
Amendment number 13. This amendment prohibits all rifle, pistol, skeet, and archery ranges in the parole town center regardless of being indoor or outdoor.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. And, and Mr. Chair Smith, I did not mean to, you know, be disrespectful to your idea of Rodvian Town. I feel like I live in Rodvian Town every day, and I should invite everyone over, because it's great. But anyway, here, let's talk about shooting ranges in town center. So I feel like when we're talking about, you know, high-density locations, we're talking about lots of people in close proximity. You're talking about restaurants that have alcohol. You're talking about pubs that also have alcohol. And, you know, minimizing, there's lots of great places that aren't in town centers where you can set up a shooting range, and I think in a very high-dense place is just not ideal. So move to adopt amendment number 13.
Second.
I'll second it. Second, Allison.
Oh, I got, I was like, oh, I guess this one isn't a, you know. Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Administration supports. This came out of conversations. As Ms. Rodvian mentioned, this is just for this limited area.
Your second amendment, right, sir?
What about those, the, like, even with the archery, like, they have the indoor ones, the small ones, so, so not even the archery ones that have, like, the, like, the axe-throwing places that are similar in construct? I mean, I'm just, I don't know, I'm thinking outside.
So I'll defer maybe to Office of Law, but I feel like axe-throwing is not covered here.
You had all the other sort of
I definitely understand why you would want, like, why that would fit, but it's not mentioned here. So
I don't mean, I'm not trying to add things, so I was just
Am I correctly reading it, that axe-throwing would be allowed in this, the way this amendment is written?
Kelly County Supervisor, County Attorney, I don't believe axe-throwing is included in the, in the category of the rifle, pistol, or skeet shooting ranges. I'm not sure what category it may fall in, but I don't think it falls in that one.
No, I mean, I was just curious. Have you have, like, these amenities, restaurants that have either archery or axe, kind of similar mechanics to some extent? That's all, I was just curious.
Oh, move to adopt motion, amendment number 13. I can't get my words straight today.
I think you already, I think you already did, but
Oh, okay, great.
No, we're just on a roll here.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
I don't know who went first. Ms., like, not if I share.
Okay, great. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I need to pull up the actual bill to see how this all fits together. I, I actually find this a little odd.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. As, as the parole town center currently is drafted
All these other noxious uses right there.
But this is saying something about striking indoor. So outdoor ones are currently
Allowed.
Allowed. Outdoor and indoor are currently allowed, and we're taking indoor and outdoor out.
Outdoor is already prohibited.
Outdoor is prohibited currently.
No?
Other way around. Outdoor is allowed, indoor is already prohibited. This is going to prohibit both. Sorry, I'm not right. It looks, I mean, that's the way it looks.
You could have just gone first.
So my question is
Why would the indoor one be?
I think as we look at different sort of forms of entertainment, even though it's a town center, I'm just not sure why indoor skeet or archery or, I mean, even technically a rifle range, it's indoor, so presumably it's in a
Enclosed.
Enclosed location. Eh, I mean, is that a real thing? Is this a real issue? Outdoor, I get. High-density, close proximity, walkable, I get. Outdoor, that's something that should, that is probably better in a, in a place with more space, but why indoor? And they're all put together in one thing. I don't like it.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I am looking at this, I mean, I see some of these other uses that are just completely in a posit to what we're doing in the parole town center. You look at some of these recycling facilities and gravel and bulk, things like that. Clearly, those are not things that we would want to see in the town center. It just doesn't make sense for that area. But I do agree, I'm thinking about On Target out in Severn, right? I mean, it's in the shopping center. You don't even know it's there if you weren't looking for it. So I'm just not sure why we're telling folks who live in parole town center in what we want to make a walkable, non-auto-centric area, hey, by the way, you're not allowed to have an indoor gun range. And if there's room, why you couldn't necessarily do an outdoor gun range when we're opening this up and allowing for these golf facilities? I think if we're looking at the maximum number of amenities that we're going to give to people living in these areas, this seems to be the opposite of what we're trying to do there. So just thoughts on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to point out, as we're talking about parole town center, I think there is a tendency, I found myself doing it, thinking of the shopping center, the town center that you go to, but the map is actually well beyond that. So I think of the existing indoor pistol skeet and archery ranges and rifle ranges that we have. I have one in the 5th district that I, too, have driven by tons of times before I even realized it was there. So I think there is a potential to have some of these businesses, or one of these businesses, somewhere in this larger map. It's not just the, the town center as we talk about it, when we're talking about going shopping, so.
Yeah, when I, when I buy a house or a condo in Rodvian Town, which I will at some point, like, I can see this is one of the, one of the, as far as indoor, the entertainment aspects. I mean, I know this is just your district, just sort of proposing it to you, whether it's, I've seen safe skeet, archery, even axe-throwing, indoor activities that are, that would be appropriate for, for a town center. It's, it's Rodvian Town, but if I were living there, it seems like a fun, fun thing to do if I were there. That's all.
That's fair. And, and I really do respect the range of viewpoints here. This is not the hill that I'm going to die on, but I may be a little sensitive to gun violence and the, the idea of unnecessarily introducing guns into a very dense area. I mean, we had a double murder-suicide in town center just earlier this year. We've had an alarming number of homicides. So it's in, in, in District 6, particularly in the city of Annapolis, but that one, the double homicide slash suicide, where three people were killed, was in the town center. And so I'm, this amendment airs on the side of not introducing more firearms into the area, other than law enforcement, of course, who would always have them. But like I said, differing folks may, reasonable people may disagree on this one. So again, not the hill I'm going to die on, but this was an eye towards safety, not introducing weapons in a place where alcohol served. We've unfortunately had incidents in the past.
That's why I was focused on the skeet, archery, and axe-throwing, but axe-throwing isn't on here. So, yeah.
You and Jerry Walker, were you out there? You were former Councilman Walker out there, axe-throwing.
Could an amendment, just point out, just take away the rifle and the pistol range at some point, or totally up to you?
We have one more meeting during which we can amend this bill, so if there's interest in bringing additional amendments, I believe we can do that next meeting and still pass the bill before its expiration date. So happy to talk about that. If this amendment is not the one the council likes to pass.
I just want Rodvian Town to be a nice, happy place. I'm just supporting. So we need, Mr. Volkey.
Yeah, I appreciate the concerns from Councilwoman Rodvian, and I, I think all of us understand the distinction between people who are lawful gun owners who are going to a range to shoot versus people who are coming to the town center and are murdering other people. So I just want to make that distinction. I think that is a very fair concern that you have. I think we have to always be careful that we're not sort of lumping everybody together, because certainly there is a distinction between people going to a gun range to sort of practice, some people are shooters for target practice, some people do competitions, things like that. So I think there's a big distinction between that versus coming into the town center with a gun with the intent to commit a murder, which is a totally different, different situation. But I, I, I think I'm going to probably work on something on this for the next meeting. So I appreciate hearing everybody's comments on where they are on this.
I was just going to add that if you've ever gone into an indoor range, they are typically very, there's a lot of security measures involved. A lot of the folks in there are either practicing or working towards their state license requirements. And I can nearly assure you that if anybody walked into that establishment intoxicated, they would be quickly escorted outside.
Any additional, nope, seeing no lights? Please call a roll.
I appreciate my colleagues' feedback on this one.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
One in the affirmative, six in the negative. Amendment number 13 has been defeated.
Please read amendment number 14.
Amendment number 14. This amendment clarifies that the reduced parking requirements and joint use arrangements in Section 183105 of the code may be utilized by a developer.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. So this is another one where I think that description Ms. Corby just read probably says everything you need to know, but it just allows a little bit more flexibility in how developers can meet the parking requirements. So flexibility, I think, is, is good, where there's, you know, going to be reasonableness in making the decisions about what flexibility is allowed. So with that, move to adopt amendment number 14.
Second, Allison Pickard.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I think the description of this amendment covers it very well. The administration supports. This is another one of these sort of clarifying, make sure it's perfectly clear in the plan, the intent. We support.
And it does say that they may request, right? It doesn't necessarily approve, and so that process will be litigated or whatever process.
Through the planning process. Correct.
All right. Any additional questions on amendment number 14? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 14 has been adopted.
Please read amendment number 15.
Amendment number 15. This amendment changes the requirement for certain structured parking to be for sites greater than 2 acres instead of 1.5 acres.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. So in order to achieve density, one of the things that you need in a lot of situations is parking that is more vertical instead of horizontal. However, we do have sites in the parole town center area that already exist and are in need of redevelopment, and this just expands the size of those that would be able to redevelop without adding structured parking. So this just gives a little more flexibility to who could redevelop without adding that, you know, vertical parking. And with that, I move to adopt amendment number 15.
Allison Pickard, second.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We support, I think, echoing the councilman's comments. This just provides a little bit more flexibility. It comes out of discussions with the stakeholders and specifically just providing a little bit more room without blowing it apart. We support.
All right. Any additional comments? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 15 has been adopted. We're almost done.
Please read amendment number 16.
Amendment number 16. This amendment requires certain site access points only be required when determined to be feasible by the Office of Planning and Zoning.
All right, Ms. Rodvian.
So the original language basically would make interconnectivity a requirement, and for example, you could imagine two adjacent parcels that had a deep ravine between them, and that would force, you know, a very expensive bridge, for example. Or you would have two neighboring parcels where one of the property owners did not want to participate and would not give permission for the interconnectivity. So if there's a situation where the interconnectivity is not feasible, this gives, again, flexibility. Planning and zoning has the opportunity to say, we will waive that requirement. And with that, I move to adopt amendment number 16.
Is there a second? Oh, wow. Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We support, echo Councilwoman's comments, just a little bit more flexibility.
Okay. Yeah, I like, because I had a conversation in reference, not this, in general, but I like that it gives that flexibility to make common sense, you know, decisions when it comes, at least to this parcel. So that makes sense to me. But any, seeing no lights, go ahead and call the roll.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number 16 has been adopted.
All right, please read Amendment Number 17.
Amendment Number 17. This amendment allows a developer to request a pre-application meeting to discuss an incentive program application.
All right, Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. So hopefully, this would have been allowable in the bill as it's written, but it just makes it very explicit that a developer has that, you know, has the right to request that meeting in order to discuss incentive possibilities. So if they're, you know, asking for some sort of trade-off, they can request this meeting and sort of get the parameters of, you know, how their project can go forward early in the game rather than having to wait till later in the game. And this is the last amendment, so I move to adopt Amendment 17, and I ask for your support.
Second, Allison Pickard.
Everybody's second.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just once again, we support, this is, to be clear, something that the administration envisioned would always be allowed, but this just makes it explicit that we would have to allow it. But I guarantee you, this administration, this planning and zoning department would have always had the meeting.
Yeah, I was gonna ask.
It's not a bad idea to put it in code.
Yeah. Yeah, I was gonna ask, this should be common sense across all the applications, not just the parole town center. So as we do our group, our individual groups and teams and planning and all of that, maybe that language is sort of put at the top layer to say, hey, because we want to speed up the process. Not saying we're going to approve everything, but it shouldn't take years to have a decision made if someone's trying to get a deck even though, put on their house. It shouldn't take eight or nine months. It's a deck, right? It's, well, I know, I know, but even the planning and zoning parts.
You saw the department get a little.
They're like, got it.
I know, but planning and zoning also, there have been instances where things have taken a long time.
This, it happens, a conversation oftentimes will identify problems earlier. It's a good idea. We're comfortable putting this in code. We support.
Seeing no lights.
I got a light. I just wanted to say thank you to all my colleagues for going through all these amendments, and really to the County Executive's Office, Planning and Zoning, and Office of Law. There is some serious expertise here that we've been able to lean into heavily in order to, you know, do things that wouldn't kind of break apart the integrity of the parole town center plan, but have improved it and hopefully avoid conflicts and, you know, strange outcomes in the end. So I really just want to say thank you again, and I ask for your support on Amendment 17.
Well, betting 14 out of 15 is really good, I'm just saying.
I'll take it. I'll take it. And I wasn't sure about that one anyway, so, you know.
So please call the roll.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number 17 has been adopted.
All right, so Bill Number 6423? 6423 will be heard on October 2, 2023. Madam Secretary, please read up the title of Bill Number 6523.
Bill Number 6523. An ordinance concerning zoning, critical area growth allocation for property located on Galesville Road in Galesville, Maryland.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me, I have Lynn Miller from the Office of Planning and Zoning and Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. Bill 6523 was discussed at the previous meeting. This is for granting a critical growth allocation to property owned by Galesville Community Partners to enable the rehabilitation and restoration of the historic Cold Store in Galesville, which has been a community priority for a number of years. We amended it at the last meeting to make it effective contingent on approval by the Critical Area Commission, and we'd ask for your support.
Okay. Any additional questions for 6523? Okay. We'll now open Bill 6523 up for public hearing. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Mr. Chair.
I don't see any previous, anyone want to speak on Bill Number 6523? If not, the public hearing on Bill 60, oh, all right, we got one. Name and address for the record.
David Morseburger, Davidsonville, Maryland. I'm not here for or against the redevelopment of the site in Galesville. This is about the development in critical areas, and more specifically, the change from limited to intensely developed areas. I think this is one example of why people have issues with the trust in government. According to Maryland, intensely developed areas are defined as areas of 20 or more adjacent acres where residential, commercial, institutional, and industrial land uses predominate. IDAs are areas of concentrated development where little natural habitat occurs. In IDAs, the main focus of the critical area program is on improving water quality. I do not see where the environment regulations include exceptions to meet development needs. An argument may be that it's only a half an acre. That makes the exception even worse when you look at the 20 acres above. The bill also says if neither one or two occur, then this approval of the growth allocation is rescinded by operation of law, and the prior critical area designation for the property described herein as limited development area shall be restored without further action. This further demonstrates it's an exception for development. There must be another way besides making exceptions to necessary environmental regulations that are, that are in this case created to protect our precious Chesapeake Bay. And this seems to be very similar to what the gentleman said earlier, that these text amendments in the charter that, that are being proposed to support one person. He needs to, you know, he had, basically was talking against those. So that's, that's the end of my testimony. Thank you.
No, thank you. All right. Seeing no additional movement, public hearing on Bill Number 6523 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6523.
Bill Number 6523. An ordinance concerning zoning, critical area growth allocation for property located on Galesville Road in Galesville, Maryland.
So, so Ms. Hunt, this is a for a specific parcel in Galesville, correct?
Half an acre.
And if this passes, it doesn't approve it unless the Critical, American Critical Area Commission approves it?
Correct.
So that body will literally have, to make a determination on this, this change or use, if you will.
Yes.
Okay. And so we're just queuing it up to say, hey, Commission, look at this. We think that this particular activity that we want to do there is something that should be allowed. Is that accurate?
Yes. Yeah, I'll defer to the Office of Planning and Zoning to explain why you have to make this change.
Lynn Miller, yes, the Critical Area Commission will need to approve the bill if passed by the council, but I'll also just point out that the growth allocation itself doesn't negate any, any of the other requirements, so the property would still have to go through site development plan permitting and all the other regulations in Articles 17 and 18.
Check. Okay. All right.
I just want to say I had the opportunity last week to go to Galesville for something else, and I specifically looked for this property when I was there, and it really is right in the heart, and you can tell that it could be a really vital part of the community if it's, when it's redeveloped and that it probably once was, and it's just a building, an area that needs a little, little attention to it. So I look forward to seeing what can be done there.
And this is in District 7, correct? Okay. Does the Councilwoman have any, just hate to put you on the spot.
No, you're fine.
It's your area.
This has been very much a community-driven effort within Galesville. It's, you know, it's a group, one person that owns this property, and the group is very much focused on the mutual benefit of everyone in Galesville, you know, kind of bring the heartbeat back, and that's the motivation. And really, they've, they've operated with a lot of transparency and community input.
Check. Okay. All right, seeing no additional lights. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 6523.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill Number 6523 has been passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6623.
Bill Number 6623. An ordinance concerning zoning, outdoor lighting on piers.
All right. Over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We discussed this bill at length during the last council meeting and had two amendments. I know we do have to go through the public hearing at this time, but in light of some information that has come to me, I need to work on some, at least one amendment, and will be making a motion to hold at the appropriate time. Thank you.
All right.
I have nothing to add.
Okay. Just wanted to make, just wanted to hand it over just to make sure. We'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 6623. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimonial, through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Mr. Chair.
I didn't see anyone sign up ahead of time as well. Anyone would like to speak on 6623? Seeing no movement, public hearing on Bill 6623 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6623.
Try that again. Bill Number 6623. An ordinance concerning zoning, outdoor lighting on piers.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to hold this bill until our next legislative meeting on October 2.
2nd?
Rodvian's second.
That was the tie. Please call the roll.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number 13 has been adopted.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Joining me at the table, yeah, absolutely, is Ms. Pampa, Ms. Schultz, our Boards and Commissions Director, and Ms. Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. You have three resolutions in front of you, 33, 34, and 35. They are interconnected as they are all the Stakeholder Advisory Committee appointments for Regions 1, 3, and 9 respectively. I am going to make a couple of comments on just the broad process because we use that process for the entire, for all the SACs, and answer any specific questions you have about individual SACs as you bring them up. So we're excited to bring these forward. As a reminder, it's Regions 1, 3, and 9. I'll give you those communities real quick because we don't all live region areas, and they don't quite match up with legislative districts, so it's a whole nother set of communities to learn. Region 1 is the county's northernmost region. It includes Brooklyn Park, Lithicken Heights, Curtis Bay, Ferndale, BWI, Harmond's, and parts of Hanover. As a reminder, that is Resolution 3323, the one we're talking about now. Region 3 is Glen Burnie, Severn, and parts of Millersville. Region 9 is the southern portion of the county, is exclusively in Council District 7. It runs right along the water, sort of south from the Mayo, from Edgewater to North Beach, bordered on the west by Route 2. So it's sort of the right-on-the-water part of South County. The county code stipulates the composition of our Stakeholder Advisory Committees. They shall contain no less than nine and up to 15 members. It lays out a number of criteria in these resolutions before you comply with the code. I want to thank our long-range planning staff who led the charge to solicit applications. There was a lot of work to gather that information, chart it, make sure that we reviewed it all. And I also want to thank you, the council, who helped advertise and push out and get applicants in. You know, not everybody knows about these opportunities, so we had to, we had to communicate through every channel of comms that we could, from our social media to your newsletters, to the County Executive's newsletters, everywhere we could promoting folks to sign up if they wanted to get involved, and explain to them what a Stakeholder Advisory Committee is and what it does. Just to give you a sense of how well we all did, we had 114 applications for a total of 45 spots for these three regions. We were very fortunate, we had more qualified applicants in each of the regions to pick from. And as you all saw, because each council member who overlaps does get an appointment, you all saw every applicant. We had a number of folks, I want to say to the folks that did apply that were not selected. You know, it wasn't, it was a very tough decision for the county exec. I'm sure you all will echo that for your appointments. We had great applicants, and we just don't have enough seats for everybody. You can't have a commission, a committee of 45 people and be effective. It does have to be a small group to do the work that they're doing. We tried to balance and had requirements in the code to balance certain backgrounds and make sure we have the right expertise, the right backgrounds of the individuals. And I think you see these commissions are well-rounded and will, will help produce robust region plans. So again, I want to thank the team from OPZ who spearheaded this effort and our council members as well. So with that, for Region, for Region 1, for 3323, we ask that you approve the resolution. Thank you.
All right. Any additional comments from council members? Seeing none. We will now open the public hearing on Resolution 3323. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not. We did not receive anything, Mr. Chair.
I don't see any one that signed up in advance. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on Resolution 3323 from the public? All right, seeing no movement, public hearing on Resolution 3323 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 3323.
Resolution Number 3323. Resolution approving the nominations for appointment to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee for Region Planning Area Number 1.
Any final discussions? Seeing no lights, please call the roll.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Resolution Number 3323 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 3323.
Resolution Number 3323. Resolution approving the nominations for appointment to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee for Region Planning Area Number 1.
Any final discussions? Seeing no lights, please call the roll.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Resolution Number 3323 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 3423.
Resolution Number 3423. Resolution approving the nominations for appointment to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee for Region Planning Area Number 3.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just refer to my comments previously. This is for Region 3. Please approve.
All right, seeing no additional comments, we'll now open a public hearing on Resolution 3423. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Mr. Chair.
One has signed up ahead of time. Anyone in the audience who wish to speak on 3423? Seeing no movement, public hearing on Resolution 3423 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 3423.
Resolution Number 3423. Resolution approving the nominations for appointment to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee for Region Planning Area Number 3.
Seeing no lights, please call the roll.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Resolution Number 3423 has been adopted.
Please read the title of Resolution 3523.
Resolution Number 3523. Resolution approving the nominations for appointment to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee for Region Planning Area Number 9.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I'll refer to my comments from two resolutions previous. Thank you.
Love it. Now open the public hearing on Resolution Number 3523. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Mr. Chair.
All right, no one has signed up as well. Anyone in the audience who wants to speak on 3523? Seeing no movement, public hearing on Resolution 3623 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 3623.
Resolution Number 3523. Resolution confirming the appointments of the Anor- of Anorrendal County residents to serve on the Spending Affordability Committee.
All right. Seeing no lights, please call the roll.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 3423 has been adopted.
Please read the title of Resolution 3523.
Resolution Number 3523. Resolution approving the nominations for appointment to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee for Region Planning Area Number 9.
Mr. Baron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I'll refer to my comments from two resolutions previous. Thank you.
Love it. Now open the public hearing on Resolution Number 3523. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Mr. Chair.
All right, no one signed up in advance. Anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on 3523? Seeing no movement, public hearing on Resolution 3523 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 3523.
Resolution Number 3523. Resolution approving the nominations for appointment to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee for Region Planning Area Number 9.
Madam Vice Chair.
Just to get a word in before we keep going on these resolutions, I do want to extend my gratitude and appreciation to the Office of Planning and Zoning for the amazing spreadsheets of all the applicants, for all of us to take into it under advisement. I don't want to let the night go by without commenting. I know it was a big puzzle piece to make sure there's diversity of all kinds in all shapes and sizes on these committees, and I look forward to seeing the work that comes out of them. So thank you very much.
Any additional, okay, any additional, seeing no additional lights. Please call the roll on 35, 30, yeah, 3523.
Mr. Volkey.
Yes.
Ms... That was, that was...
Did you translate for us?
That was a very well-spoken yes. Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 3523 has been adopted.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 3623.
Resolution Number 3623. Resolution confirming the appointments of the Anor- of Anorrendal County residents to serve on the Spending Affordability Committee.
All right, and... Please. Also, I was gonna call you Mr. Baron, but you were far from it.
I'm definitely not him, no. Lot more hair. Kaylee Schultz from the County Executive's Office. With me at the table is Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. Resolution Number 3623 confirms Dr. David Jupe and Tony Feder to serve on the Spending Affordability Committee. Dr. Jupe currently serves as a revenue analyst for Prince George's County, and he would be reappointed for his second term and is a resident of District 6. And Tony Feder currently serves as a budget analyst in the Government Accountability Office in Washington, D.C., and would be serving his first term, and he resides in District 5. I am happy to answer any questions at this time.
Lights. No further discussion. We'll now open the public hearing on Resolution 3623. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Mr. Chair.
All right, no one has signed up as well. Anyone in the audience who wants to speak on 3623? Seeing no movement, public hearing on Resolution 3623 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 3623.
Resolution Number 3623. Resolution confirming the appointments of Anorrendal County residents to serve on the Spending Affordability Committee.
All right, seeing no lights. Please call the roll.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 3623 has been adopted.
Please read the title of Resolution Number 3723.
Resolution Number 3723. Resolution confirming the appointment of a member to serve on the Personnel Board for Anorrendal County.
Once again, Kaylee Schultz from the administration. Resolution Number 3723 appoints Noel Ano- uh, excuse me, I trouble over this all the time, Anouskewitz to the Personnel Board. She is a member of the Classified Service and was nominated by Secret Ballot by the Classified Service members. She is an Assistant Director in the Department of Public Works, and I'm happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Any questions on Resolution 3723? Seeing none. We'll now open a public hearing on Resolution 3723. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything, Mr. Chair.
No one has signed up as well. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak on 3723? All right, public hearing on Resolution 3723 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 3723.
Resolution Number 3723. Resolution confirming the appointment of a member to serve on the Personnel Board for Anorrendal County.
All right, seeing no discussion or no lights. Please call the roll.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 3723 has been adopted.
Thank you. Please read the title of Resolution 3823.
Resolution Number 3823. Resolution approving the nomination of members to the Anorrendal County Human Relations Commission.
Once again, Kaylee Schultz from the administration. I also have Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. Resolution Number 3823 appoints Goliath Haieva, a District 5 resident, Indubodala, who's a current senior at Glenbernie High School, who is recommended by Crask, and a designee from the Anorrendal Community Development Services, Inc., to serve on the Human Relations Commission. The administration will offer an amendment at the appropriate time, and I want to thank Council Member Fiedler for her District 5 recommendation.
Thank you. All right, seeing no further lights. We'll now open up the public hearing on Resolution 3823. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Mr. Chair.
All right, and I don't see that anyone has signed up ahead of time. Some of you all will see we're going through this sort of procedural, but it's important, right? Because every single resolution bill, we want to always have an opportunity for anyone to speak up, and so, you know, in the future, a bill was passed, and someone says, hey, well, you know, you didn't give us an opportunity. That's why we go through this, these steps every single time, so that that gate is always open for the public. So just, I know it seems sort of monotonous and redundant, but it's, it's for the benefit of our society when we do that. So, so the public hearing going, where was I at? I think I just lost myself trying to be all prolific over here. What did I say?
I just needed to read the title again.
Oh, please read the title of Resolution Number 3823.
Resolution Number 3823. Resolution approving the nomination of members to the Anorrendal County Human Relations Commission.
And I see there is an amendment. Please read Amendment Number 1.
Amendment Number 1. This amendment replaces Erin Karpowitz as the county executive's nomination with Lisa Soro as the designee of the Executive Director of Anorrendal Community Development Services, Inc., to serve on the Human Relations Commission.
Ms. Schultz.
The amendment does pretty much what Madam Secretary does read. Lisa Soro is the general counsel to ACDS, and while she is with ACDS, this is who the executive director plans to send to the Human Relations Commission meetings.
Awesome. Thank you. Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt. Allison Pickard.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Please call the roll. Oh, Ms...
Just confirming, that second was Ms. Rodvian?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey.
Was it a yes?
Thank you again for the, the yes. Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 1 has been adopted.
All right, and this is a resolution, so we can vote on this tonight as well. So, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3823.
I'm sorry, did you ask me to read the title? I was ready to read, do the roll call.
Oh.
Oh, are we not reading?
We just, we just, we just voted on the amendment, so now...
I'm happy to read the title. I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, read the title.
Ready to go. Resolution Number 3823. Resolution approving the nomination of members to the Anorrendal County Human Relations Commission.
All right, is there any final discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I do want to take an opportunity to thank all of the volunteers that have come forward tonight in that we're appointing to all of our commissions, but especially, I'm very keen on making sure we have a student voice in all of our activities, and I love the fact that our student member of the Human Relations Commission is coming from Glenbernie High School. Go Gophers! And thank you again to everybody who serves on these commissions. They are volunteer, and they are time-consuming, but they are important as, as all voices are needed in our county government. So thank you.
Ms. Hummer.
While she is a Glenbernie student, she is a District 4 resident and lives in my neighborhood, so I just have to do that shout-out as well. Yeah.
Well, go ahead and double their salary. There you go. Thank them for their service. Please call the roll.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 3823 has been adopted.
And please read the title of Resolution Number 3923.
Resolution Number 3923. Resolution nominating a member to serve on the Anorrendal County Ethics Commission.
All right, Mr. Volkey.
This is my nominee for the Ethics Commission. Thanks.
Sure. Um, sword sweep. All right. Any further discussion? Seeing no lights. We will now open the public hearing on Resolution Number 3923. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the